Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Board of Education meeting for Thursday, April 20th, 2023. If you could please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Motion to approve the minutes of the April 12th, 2023 meeting.
Motion second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Prove the agenda first, next.
Motion to...oh, sorry. Motion to approve revised agenda?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Update on goals.
Update on goals?
Um, thank you. This evening, we are going to do a quick update on the district goals. Uh, since we last presented, I believe sometime in September, October, we identified our goals and we felt that it would be most appropriate to, uh, share with the board and the community where we are as far as attaining the goals that we had presented earlier. We will have a final presentation in June, but we again felt that it was most appropriate to, uh, let the community know that we continue to work on the goals that we identified and where we are. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to our cabinet, to my cabinet, and begin the presentation.
All right. Bargav, you're going to start?
Good evening, everybody. Um, so the first goal that that we have as as the district is using the data to improve student outcomes. And and we continuously make the stride in this this goal. Um, one of the first step we did was identify the central repository system. We use a tool called Unified Insight. It's a cloud-based tool that allows us to identify various data points and bring the data points into the unified system. So far, we have, um, we have various data points that we were able to combine into this one system. So there was student demographic information, enrollment, grades, attendance, discipline, and some of the assessment data that we are able to bring into this tool like STAR, New York State three-to-it, uh, testing data, region's exam data, ACT and SAT data. So that that central repository is is complete, um, and as as generally it is, it's ongoing. Collecting and analyze the data, this is one of the critical part. Once we have the data, we continuously not only add more data points, but analyze what the data is telling us. Working with my two colleagues, uh, Dr. Hassler and and Mr. Kravitz, this is an ongoing process throughout the school year and pro and moving forward as well. Create organizational process. This is another important, uh, identification of one of the first goal was. We continuously improve, um, in defining the process and what the process brings the outcome. For example, one of the process that we were able to identify as a part of the NIST cybersecurity framework is access control. Because we were identifying the process, it allows us to establish, uh, a specific quarterly report. So we identify five users randomly and say, and then each system administrators basically approve that. If we have five users, for example, it could be a bus driver, teacher, TA, somebody in the technology, or somebody in the clerical unit. What access of the systems they have? Should they have the access continuously? If they move their position, what access we have removed or added to that process? And ultimately, at the end of that process, we do that process every quarter, so four times a year, and the various system administrators, like the WinCap administrator, Power School administrator, IP administrator, identify those people and then approve that that they have the appropriate right. Having this process in place allow us to continuously improvise and then also making sure that folks who have supposed to have the access, have the access, not more, not less. The last bullet is continuous process improvement. By having this improvisation process into that into our system, it allows us to increase the efficiency. Not only we are identifying the process processes, but we are also looking at that how do we improve the efficiency of the current process and make the better decision based on the the student data. Back to you, Mr. Kravitz.
All right. Thank you. So goal number...
Can I just apologize and go back to the first slide?
Sure.
So one of the things that we have that that, um, Dr. Villa spoke about is, um, creating processes. And I think he spoke, uh, in specifically to his to his department. But one of the things that we've been doing district-wide with our administrative administrative team is creating processes for everything that we do. Because what we've learned is that without documentation or a set process, when someone leaves or retires, those processes seem to have to be redone again. So part of what we've done as a team is we talk about what are our roles and responsibilities, um, what are the things that people report to us, what do they do? Because we understand that this is, you know, our our organization is always changing. New people come in, other people leave, and so it's it's in order to do that, it's it allows us to sustain the work that we continue to do. So I know that Bargav, Dr. Villa spoke about that, but I just wanted to make a point that we're continuously doing that in other areas. So thank you. Sorry.
No, you don't have to be sorry. All right. Thank you very much. So goal number one, um, continues to focus on the use of data, and I'll speak about what we're doing as far as the elementary level. We spoke a couple, we've spoken a number of times, whether it was at the start of the school year, um, we talked about it during the budget presentations focused on curriculum and and as, and in addition, the the testing result presentation that we did. First bullet is aligning curriculum to state standards. Our curriculum is rooted in state standards. What we've done this year is we've continued to focus on the importance of beginning with our state standards when we're talking about instruction. Um, it's not only where our students, what they need to meet, it's also where they need to begin. Um, developing common assessments, we've done this, um, in ELA in math, and as an example, all of our students in three through eight this this week and next week are sitting for the, um, New York State ELA assessment. All of the students at the the younger grades took a common assessment across the district, and we were able to analyze those results and and, you know, make a plan for how they were going to be doing for this current, um, this current week's seating of the of the assessment. Scheduling a curriculum night for the 22, 23 school year. One of the things that we're realizing in the needs of our our parents, our staff, our students have have changed their ability to pay attention, I think, in some cases for really long periods of time. You know, we are in a world now where everyone is is dealing with snippets of information that are are very quick. What we did is we held a virtual CRUT sitter chat focusing just on curriculum at the elementary level. There was also one for the the secondary that Dr. Hassler, I'm sure, will speak about. And if you're not, there you go, I covered you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Uh, but we did that in lieu of, uh, an entire night for, you know, entire family to come out and just hear about all the different programs. Updating pacing guides for, sorry, vertical horizontal alignment mapping, that continues to be ongoing. Um, it 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 happens with our talks, both at our grade level meetings, our our curricular meetings, um, between those grade levels. Updating pacing guides for math and ELA, the Envision Math Program, which were towards the end of year one, um, which is wild because when you think about, you know, where we were back in September, starting a math program, can seem daunting. We're almost done with our first year. That comes with a full pacing guide, and it's allowed our teachers to get into the program, understand what the needs of the students are, so that at the end of this year, we'll make some time to say, all right, what worked, what didn't work, where do we need to adjust our our pacing. Fontis and Pennell training for staff, we, what we did is we did a full recalibration for our staff in, um, in September. The reason we did that is we wanted to make sure that a, you know, a teacher in one class who was administering the Fontis and Pennell was having similar results to a teacher in a in a different class using the same assessment. Uh, we don't want one teacher, um, to say, hello, this student, you know, was at was on grade level when they were administered, but the same student could have been working with somebody else and received a totally different score at a different level. Uh, we wanted to make sure that they were as consistent as possible. Formalize a process to review student progress throughout the year. Uh, we'll talk about it in in a few slides, but we did create a new form regarding our our MTSS progress monitoring. But we've also begun, um, to review specific data points using our STAR assessments. In addition, we've allowed our teachers now and our administrators to have access to something called STAR CBM, which are these quick assessments. They're one-minute assessments that help you monitor progress of students. In addition, we can now create, um, assessments based on specific skill deficits for our students. So if, uh, if the STAR assessment, which a lot of you, you know, know about at this point, the STAR assessment is given, it may say, all right, here are the the areas for for growth that we need to see in a student. We now have quicker, you know, shorter assessments, and then that can be determined by those skills and created by those skills, so that we can accurately monitor the progress of how our students are doing. And four half-days, yep, we did all four half-days, so that was completed.
Can you talk a little bit about the half-days?
Sure. They were great. Um, they, uh, you know, the the half-days are...
Students might have thought it was great.
No, what's really interesting about the half-days, we've done a number of things. We brought in training, whether it was science, um, to to focus on our our upcoming science investigations and the new science assessments that are going to be rolled out next year. We've had Envision Math training done. It's also been a really good time for our staff to just sit and and take time to look at some of the new products that we've had and access to the new products, particularly those those that focus on the progress monitoring of our students and and the data. And I know data is is, uh, it's not even a buzzword, but it's a really important word. And I like to use the word information because we're really, the administrators could attest to this. Our administrators and our teachers are really talking about the information that that's in front of them. What we're really trying to streamline is the type of information that they're looking at. You know, we didn't want, what we don't want is one teacher looking at only one source of one type of data, another teacher looking at a different type. So we're looking at, you know, the information that we have and then determining which specific reports give us the most information and then help us make curricular decisions. And those are things that have happened on on half-days.
Right. No, I just wanted you to speak a little bit about the professional development because we've been talking a lot about providing our teachers with professional development. And have you received any feedback from the professional development that they've received?
So we have. So I'll give you a a perfect example. As late as this week, we had sessions. One of the things that we've done is, we have Envision Math this year, and the way it was structured for this year is, at the start of the year, they were all, all elementary teachers were going to receive an hour and a half or so of, um, in-person instruction from Envision Math. They were going to come on site, they were going to walk teachers to the program, here's what you need to know, here are some tools and tricks. What we found is they had access to virtual office hours and and webinars and things like that, but that wasn't necessarily working for the teachers. It's it's a hard, it's hard to say, hey, look, you on your own time, you just go and and hang out with Envision and and learn it all on your own. So what we did is, we started, and started this week at Pine Tree with our fourth and fifth grade teachers. We had Envision come back in. We, um, they worked with our, they're working with every teacher K through five for three, a three-hour session to basically update and get information as to where they are right now, um, in the program and what tools and and tricks that they'll need to get through the rest of the year. We then create crafted a survey that will go out to all of our, um, K-five or K-six folks to talk about their experience with Envision and then where they feel, you know, we can support them next year, so we can really create those, you know, professional development opportunities for next year.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Uh, yeah, go back one.
Thank you. You're welcome.
So the 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 first few goals that I'm going to speak about, um, very much overlap with a lot of the things that that, um, Matt was speaking about earlier. We also have been doing a lot of work in making sure that our curriculum is aligned to our state standards. Um, we're in the midst of a number of different shifts between, uh, the state assessments are shifting to the next-gen ELA and math standards. We have the new science standards that are being rolled out. We're transitioning to the, um, the new social studies framework. So a a key part of making sure that our curriculum is aligned to those standards is providing, as Matt said, the the professional development to the staff, um, to make sure that they're, you know, informed about what the, um, what these shifts represent. So then that way, as we go back and we reevaluate our curriculum, um, and make sure that the material that we're teaching is aligned to the standards and ultimately that have that translate to, um, student success and, um, achievement on the various data assessments. Part of that work also has been in the development of the common assessments. Um, all of the various departments have been working on creating, uh, assessments throughout the school year to evaluate student progress through the curriculum. Um, so that way, you know, rather than just having, you know, as Matt said, we're we're in the middle of administering the ELA assessment, rather than waiting for that one time-of-year snapshot on how our kids are doing, um, the ELA department, for example, at the middle school administers quarterly assessments at the end of each quarter to track student growth through that, um, through that curriculum. Uh, in in terms of reviewing student progress through the curriculum, um, we we are taking those assessments and we are putting them into a two, a tool called, uh, Formative. And one of the things that Dr. VS had spoken about earlier in that with the data repository is, um, and and we've also spoken about this in our various, um, assessment presentations, is that the benefit of administering these common assessments is to then have access to our teach, our teachers having access to how our kids are progressing in a uniform way. So imagine if I'm a seventh-grade teacher, a teacher in the sixth grade administers the, um, the the assessment in this tool called Formative. Formative then syncs directly with Power School, which is our student management system, which is also where Unified Insights, the Who Knew It platform, uh, exists. The long-term goal is, as we build this data repository, the assessments that are informative can then sync into this other tool that's in Power School and give subsequent teachers access to, I'm a seventh-grade math teacher, I'll have the ability to be able to look back and see not just how my students did on the ELA assessment, but I can see how they did on each of the quarterly assessments as well throughout the throughout the school year. So ultimately, allowing the teachers to make more direct instructional decisions in a timely way based upon the the accessibility to data. The next goal is to review the, uh, the academy program. Um, the high school conducted a a review of the academy program in the fall. They were able to present the results of that review at the December 13th Administrative Council meeting to the entire Administrative Council. Uh, the next goal is to implement the use of Naviance for current sixth graders and ninth graders. Uh, on December 6th, our sixth-grade seminar teachers were trained in Naviance, as well as our guidance councils in the middle school received the refresher training. Um, that allowed us to then be able to, uh, weave the Naviance platform into sixth-grade seminars starting this spring. So sixth graders, as we speak in seminar, are gaining exposure to Naviance. Similarly, we were able to do refreshers in the ninth grade and the 10th grade up at the high school for those students, but they they previously had access to Naviance, so those are refreshers. Now, moving forward, all students starting in sixth grade will be given access to Naviance to be able to build their, um, you know, their academic resume moving along as they progress through high school. The next item is scheduling a curriculum night. Um, the high school hosted a curriculum night on February 2nd for incoming eighth graders, uh, that aligned with the student visitations up at the high school to allow them to begin course selection as they as they transition into ninth grade. Uh, the high school also hosted an electives fair on February 3rd for all students to hear about electives being offered in the high school. And similar to what, um, Matt spoke about earlier, uh, the middle school also hosted a Crusader Chat, a virtual Crusader Chat on February 28th. It was great. Um, and if you don't believe me, I think the video is still online. You can, the recording is still online, so you can certainly still go and check that out. Thank you. Um, next is utilizing a system for tracking, uh, earned college credits. Uh, we were able to create a field in Power School for any of our dual enrollment teachers up at the high school to track any student who enrolls in a dual enrollment course and takes that course not only for Monroe Berry credit, but also for for college credit. At the end of the semester or at the end of the school year, the the various dual enrollment teachers have a spreadsheet. They enter into that spreadsheet, the various students that acquire credits towards whatever class it is that they're taking. Um, that then is imported into Power School, so we now have the ability to be able to sort and track the credit acquisition of any college-level courses that are that are up at the high school, which is, um, which is very exciting. Uh, reviewing of academic schedules, uh, both the middle school and the high school were able to develop building-level committees to explore their respective master schedules. We were able to send out a survey to all school districts in Orange, Ulster, Boses, and PNW, Putnam, Northern Westchester, Boses, for them to provide feedback on their respective middle school and high school schedules. We looked at things regarding the, how they schedule lunch periods, the structure of their periods, um, how they did handle homeroom, if they had advisory periods, um, any sort of general information about their high school schedules. We then, and middle school schedules, we then took that information and we met with a variety of different other school districts to learn a little bit more about the structures of, um, their buildings. We also sent out surveys. The middle school sent out a survey to their middle school staff. The high school sent the survey out to the the student body at the high school, just to gather information about, um, you know, our our various stakeholders on on their impressions about, um, you know, the the way that our schedules exist, and that process is continues to be ongoing. Uh, the next item is developing a summer program for students considering accelerated classes. That is something that's ongoing. The middle school is in development of a program, and that's something that'll be rolled out at the end of the year before, um, before the upcoming summer. Uh, evaluate open enrollment data. Uh, the middle school has conducted an evaluation of the open enrollment process over the last three years, which start, had started with this year's ninth-grade cohort when they were going from sixth grade to seventh grade. Um, they're going to be presenting their findings to the cabinet actually next week. Um, and then similar to what Matt had spoken about earlier, we we also had four half-days of professional development. Um, the professional development was used in a variety of different ways, including the the professional development that I spoke about regarding training and state standards, um, the development of the various common assessments, uh, as well as a lot of data review. Um, the the common assessment work is not something that's new at the secondary level for the 22, 23 school year. Um, so it's something that has been a a work in progress before then. So they were able to utilize that time in reviewing data, making instructional decisions, which assists in both student achievement, modifications in, um, in curriculum that we need to be making, um, as well as looking at the assessments themselves. The, you know, the, fortunately, the the common assessments are not something that's mandated coming from an outside source. It's something that's developed internally. So it's important for us to make sure that the assessments are effectively measuring student progress and are aligned directly to that curriculum. So, um, that's just kind of a snippet of the work that happened over those half-days.
And then these last two bullets, um, as far as the screening onboarding new students to the district, um, we've looked at it from a a number of different angles, particularly our incoming kindergarten students, we, who will all be administered, um, the Bracken Screening Tool, which will help us determine placement and and their needs for kindergarten. In addition to any other new student who comes in, um, getting them onboard as quick as we, as quick as we can in terms of, um, their own progress monitoring, so we can help determine what where their baseline is, so that we can, you know, as quickly as possible get them the services that they need. As far as aligning forms, documentation, and data used to support students, that's been completed. Um, we are also giving access, again, as I said earlier, to more data points to make both instructional and support decisions for our students.
There's also screening, um, the screening at kindergarten is a requirement, but there's also screening for UPK as well.
There is.
So whether you're entering the school district through kindergarten or entering through our pre-K program, there's a screening process that's required at both of those levels.
You?
Yeah. Okay. Uh, so I'm going to talk about goal number two, which was a safety-related goal, and primarily had to do with an assessment or an audit of the, basically, safety measures and security measures of the district, focused on our school buildings, obviously, and with related recommendations and enhancements to safety and security. So, um, in terms of the action steps, we've actually undergone the audit by Putnam Northern Westchester Boses. We went through an RFP process and selected, uh, that group. They have a lot of experience, uh, very good at this sort of thing. Uh, we have the audit reports. They've, they visited the buildings. They made observations about the buildings. They visited the buildings, met with administrators. They went and didn't meet with administrators and filed these reports. I think it was early January. So we've shared those with, uh, the key staff in the buildings. We've, uh, looked at them ourselves. We've analyzed the recommendations and and we're sort of at the point where we're finalizing. They had asked us to say, yes, we're good. We agree with this. Uh, they're filed, so we we've done that. So we're we're sort of at the point of categorizing and prioritizing them because the the recommendations are, you know, they're broad. They're all over the place, from, you know, a capital project with some enhancement to, you know, keep the back door closed and locked kind of thing. So, you know, in terms of prioritizing, categorizing, I look at it as cost feasibility and impact. So impact would be the impact on school safety. That's obviously one of the most important things. But if something is easy to do, has a big impact, and and doesn't cost very much, we're going to look at that first. You know, it's sort of a matrix. I also look at it as short, medium, and long-term items. So things that are, uh, harder to do, costs more, like a capital project, would be a longer-term thing. And so what I wanted to do now is just sort of talk about the short-term action items. So these are things which we are, we've done already or we're in the process of doing. Uh, so the first one is just mandating staff wear ID. Uh, you know, everybody's supposed to have an ID on, even visitors to the building. Uh, we initiated the credential exchange program for visitors, where they have to turn in some sort of government-issue ID. It's almost, it's almost like collateral, you know, so we know they're in the building and they're going to come back and and get their ID when they leave. Uh, in terms of facilities improvement, so, you know, this is sort of a big category. It could be capital projects and it could be smaller items. So, again, short-term focus. We've replaced the classroom door locks. We we've talked about this with with a lock that can just be pushed from the inside with a button to lock. Uh, more recently, we added safety film to exterior door, the glass of exterior doors. Uh, so it's, it enhances and reinforces that glass. We also added that same type of film to the, uh, the windows of the classroom doors at Central Valley because they have these larger windows than than typically, what you typically see. Uh, we started the Door Access Control Project, and we've talked about that, where the door can be unlocked with your ID. So it it sort of prevents people or, uh, would would keep people from propping the door open or leaving it unlocked or leaving it just open. Um, so that's, that project, literally, we started scoping that out this past summer, but due to, um, you know, supply chain issues and that sort of thing, uh, it's it's sort of been on hold. We anticipate we'll be able to do that probably in June, July, August, that timeframe. So that's in process, work in process. Uh, we're in the process of ordering classroom door window shades, so this would be a very simple shade that could be pulled down in case of emergency to prevent someone in the hallway from being able to see into the classroom. Uh, let's see. The procurement of, uh, school building maps and supplies, emergency supplies, we've started that process. Um, the digital radio project, that's a fairly big project. We're replacing all the radios in the district, and there's dozens or hundreds with a digital radio, so it's, uh, unifies the system. It's a much more robust system, much better system. Um, so that's in process. Again, bit of a holdup with, um, with ordering the equipment. The equipment's not fully available, but we're we're pretty close on that one. Uh, one thing we noted going through this process is the need for staff training. Um, and what we want to do is sort of provide everybody with a baseline understanding of the concepts involved with safety, security, and there's a lot of aspects of this. That's what makes it tricky. There's incident command structure. There's the Shell emergency responses that are over on the wall. So we all have a common understanding and of the concepts, common terminology. So all will speak in the same language. We realize that we're, we we need some work in that area, and that's obviously ongoing. So that, for instance, is happening on May 16th. We're having a threat assessment team training. Uh, that's our superintendent's conference day, so in the morning, we're going to have folks from Putnam Northern Westchester Boses come. Each building will have their their team. Uh, it would include the administrators and, you know, other other staff. It'll be a fairly big group. That'll kick that off. There's two parts to that training. So, you know, that's an example of the kind of training that we we need. We we also are scheduling something potentially as early as next week for the administrators, some additional training related to incident command structure and, uh, just kind of a review of the Shell, you know, the, uh, which is the basic emergency response system that we use in New York State. Uh, and then finally, in terms of the short term, we are going to work with PN, PNW Boses to actually meet individually with the, uh, principals in their building emergency response teams. So we're sort of in the process of setting that up, but, uh, PNW Boses folks would come to the building. They could have a more informal and sort of granular conversation with these teams that would be, you know, the ones that respond to an emergency. So so that's in the works as well. And, uh, goal number three had to do with our capital project program and the referendum planning. And a referendum, of course, was December 6th, 2022. Uh, the voters did not approve the referendum, but so we're, we're going back to the drawing board to some degree and revising the scope of work with corresponding cost estimates. What we've, what we talked about doing is sort of breaking that referendum into two parts. Um, we're going to have to use the guiding principles again. It'll be even a little more, uh, difficult to prioritize work in this case because we're anticipating, I'm not going to say exactly what the number is because we need to reconvene the Capital Project Advisory Committee, but let's say it's half of what it was. So we'll have to make some hard decisions about that, but but, uh, you know, it's still something with the idea of of two parts, and this will be, you know, phase number one. Uh, revised financial planning, I've started to do that, working with our fiscal advisor. The other steps in the process are the same. The Environmental Quality Review Act, uh, SEACR evaluation would be the same. Uh, we'll do the same sort of public relations and informational campaign with with the idea of a fall, and I'm not going to say specifically when because we're still going to, you know, sort of formalize that with the input of the board and the the advisory committee, uh, fall of 2023 referendum date.
Is that it?
That's it. That's all I had. Any questions?
It's a lot. It was like speed dating.
Got a couple anyone else?
I I have a couple.
Sure.
So, Naviance for the sixth and the ninth graders, are you planning on doing something also for the parents at some point to get them onboard?
Yeah, I I think once, once we feel, once we feel sort of comfortable and confident that we've really kind of integrated it well into the student body, I think that phase two of that would be parent education. two of that would be parent education, because parents also have the capability to be able to review it and to enter and edit things that's in there. So I think that that's probably the next layer of what we should probably be doing, but we, we haven't gotten to that point yet.
Okay. So perhaps by the time the sixth grader is like a seventh grader?
Well, the, the issue is seminar, seminar's not a full-year course. So for example, because we did the training for the sixth grade seminar teachers, we were only able to capture basically like half of the sixth grade this year, starting in September of next year, Sept- 23, 24, we'll have the full cohort of sixth grade having a profile in NAVYANCE. Then I think that we would start to have a conversation about how we can kind of really utilize that tool to its fullest extent, I think.
Okay. Should I keep going up?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. The open enrollment data, is that going to be presented, yeah, I think you said something about the middle school, it was only from the middle school, not the high school?
Yeah, I mean, right now, the, the open enrollment data at the middle school is a little bit different than the open enrollment data at the secondary level, because really at the secondary level, open enrollment has kind of always happened. We had originally talked about open enrollment on the math and science side, but really, open enrollment for like the AP courses and things like that has really kind of always been the case. The, the, the true open enrollment started at the middle level with the current ninth grade class, rather than having, and there was a presentation to the board a number of years ago, that the board had asked about how students get selected to get into like the, the honors and algebra at the middle level. So basically, the shift was, rather than having it be like the top 100 of the top 125 kids, we would allow open enrollment from sixth grade to seventh grade into the seventh grade accelerated math course, that was sort of the beginning. So the data that we're looking at now is the current ninth grade group, how many kids, I mean, we're looking at a couple of different things. How many kids from sixth grade to seventh grade openly enrolled into accelerated math in seventh grade? How many kids decided to stay in seventh grade accelerated math into eighth grade algebra? And what the results of those regions exams were for each of those three cohorts, combined with the demographic information of what is the population of kids that are selecting to go into some of these accelerated courses? And that kind of ties into the other initiative at the middle school, which was, how do we offer maybe summer, like some sort of summer programming, if kids are deciding to make that leap, to equip them maybe with some additional skills to achieve more success when they make that decision? So I think that that's sort of what the, the focus of that is, looking at the summer enrollment, I'm sorry, the open enrollment data, and then how do we potentially offer opportunities for kids to increase their probability of being successful? You know, the idea, the, the idea is to try to increase access to as many as we possibly can, and I think that, you know, the, the overarching question of that is like, how are we doing with that? You know, because one of the arguments way back when I did that presentation that I was talking about was, you know, the, the cutoff for kids from sixth grade to seventh grade and to get into accelerated math might be, depending upon where the cutoff is, say a 92, one year, but depending upon the population of kids, the cutoff might be for the top 100 kids, maybe a 93 the following year. So a student with a 92 one year might have gotten in, but a student with a 90, with a 92 the following year might not have gotten in. So now the question is, are we opening it up to all opportunities? Or is it maybe the kids that might have been right on the cusp that really wanted that opportunity who are taking advantage of that? And how do we increase those opportunities? I think that that's the focus of the, the analysis that we're doing.
Okay.
Hope that makes sense, the way that, does that, okay, okay.
At least it did to me, but I'm saying, you're having that presentation for next week for?
Right, right now, the, the middle school's coming and, and they're presenting, they're presenting it to the cabinet to talk about, because it, it has, it has an impact on a variety of different things. The more, the more sections we offer, you know, part of the reason why it's happening with math is, it means that we have more sections of, say, accelerated math seven, less sections of general math seven. So it's got kind of like a scheduling, a scheduling impact. It doesn't have any impact on staffing, because it, it would just mean we have more sections of accelerated math seven and less sections of, of regular math seven, basically.
So when do you think you'll give us that information?
I don't know, I, I mean, I could certainly, I could certainly weave that into the final goals presentation when we, in June.
Right, that's the plan. So I know that they, they talked a lot of things about summaries, so what we want to do is give you those summaries when we do the final presentation.
Sure, I mean, I can weave in, you know, some of the general information about the academy review that they did, I can talk about some of the highlights about the scheduling work that's, that's being talked about right now and things like that, so, yeah, I can, I'm happy to do it.
And I think that, well, that leads, my, my last one about that is about the scheduling survey results?
Yep.
Okay, so you'll give us some type of a summary as to how?
Sure, yeah. I, I mean, right, you know, I think in general, shifts in schedule are major, major conversations. And right now, we're not, we're not projecting like a significant upheaval of a schedule, obviously, for September. So, but there's still things that, you know, we're, we're talking about and we're looking into, so I can certainly weave that in there.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Sure.
Got a question for Bogart regarding the, the safety of the information and the data that's collected. I know early on, what I heard was there was a little bit of concern of what happens when you bring all this information to one place, hacking and stuff like that, can you just give a very brief explanation and?
That's always a concern. And, and, but the, the product, the company we use is Power School, it is a, is a very known national company, their cloud architecture is phenomenal, and we feel very confident that they're securing our data. We also do, as a part of the NIST assessment, we also do their audit review. I don't want to say audit review, we do their, their data check, and they are SOC 2 compliant, so that's the, one of the highest certification for the data privacy. So we, we feel very strong about what they do with the student data. They are also, 75% of the school district across the United States use this, close to 75%. So it's one of the big company, and this is one of their biggest product. So I feel very confident in terms of protecting the data, but as you know, it's 99.9% secure, there's always something chance.
Thank you. And question for, for Patrick, regarding the capital project, when do you think we'll get our first view of what the new scope of work looks like?
Well, it's hard to say, it would be, it would depend largely on the, the capital advisory task force committee, so we need to reconvene that group and bring our architects and the construction manager back in. I've been in touch with the construction manager and the architect, and we'd have to make some hard decisions. Andre and I have discussed that, like what, you know, out of the priorities, what are the, the subset of priorities, phase one? So, you know, I think that could happen, you know, in the next four to six weeks, it probably should start. You know, potentially, maybe we'll, maybe get the budget behind us, you know, and then start that work. And that could, you know, kind of proceed June, July into the summer, and then we, we roll it out, same way we did before, in terms of a, you know, big public relations campaign.
There'll be another roadshow.
Another roadshow.
Good. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a question for Patrick. From the, the day that you mentioned for the safety and training, is that all staff that's getting it on that day, or you're saying it's certain staff?
The May 16th day is the, the threat assessment teams. So it's specific about threat assessment and that process, so that's a preventative process, and again, it's, it's not even something I know that much about, but the teams, each building is supposed to have a threat assessment team. So it's a team they would convene if there was a child that was troubled, or they had concerns about, or, you know, really anything, any situation, they convene that team, they have, you know, different stakeholders on the team, and they would, you know, analyze the threat, make some recommendations about how to proceed. So it's training for that individual team in each building. And then certain stakeholders, you know, for instance, like the cabinet, principals, assistant principals, maybe a select group, you know, obviously, the director of security will be there, he's had some of this training, other stakeholders will be part of that. But that's part of that baseline training that we need. So those are really important roles, the threat assessment team, so we all need to hear the same thing, have the same kind of baseline training. There's other things that we've talked about, instant command structure training, so if something goes wrong, there are certain roles and responsibilities that are supposed to occur or, or be, you know, laid out, that's another thing we're, we're trying to sort of shoehorn in before the end of the year. We were, we were talking about going over the Shell, you know, the emergency response system in New York State is called Shell, and so we want to have sort of a review, an overview of that. You know, we had a recent incident with a, with a lockout, you know, so I mean, it's actually quite relevant, you know, that we review some of these concepts, and that's, a lot of that stuff should be ongoing. We want to, like I think about it, have cyclical and annual training for everybody that's involved with it. You know, so it's, it's, it's a big task, and it's something we, we need to do first, you know, we need to have that, I think that piece falls into place first.
So the goal is to have two pieces in the next, I would say, four weeks. First is the threat, well, second is the threat assessment team, and each building administrator has already identified, who are the people that are going to be on my team? And that's more preventative. A lot of studies have come out, and, and what they've indicated is that it's really important to have preventative measures. So if there's a student who you believe is in crisis, what do you do with that student? Because oftentimes, when they go back and study the child who has engaged in very dangerous behavior, there were signs that could have been identified and could have been mitigated had there been a team in place. So our goal is really to be preventative, and also in case of an emergency, to be prepared for that as well. So that's, that's number one, and as Patrick said. The second thing is training our administrative team to have an understanding of what all of these things happen, and then have every person in our district be trained. And then the other piece is drill, 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 drill. I think that's going to be super important, because once you drill enough times, then people will become very readily available if there's an emergency to know what to do. What are the steps that I have to take? And so I just want the community to know that one of the things we'll be doing next year is a lot of drills. We'll let them know, sometimes we don't let them know, but it's important for us to have these active drills, because we need to get our staff and students ready for, God forbid if anything were ever to happen, just to be prepared.
Also with a, with a focus on consistency between the buildings, because we've got a number of shared staff, we have substitutes who move from one building to another, so, you know, if there's something in one building's happening, they're going to have the same reaction or a similar response as they would in different buildings, so there aren't, you know, there are going to be enough surprises that, you know, that would not be, you know, included in that list.
And the event that happened this week on Monday was more of a precautionary measure, but it was good for the district, right? Because when we said everyone was, you're on a lockout, teachers who were, or staff that were not in the building were not allowed back in the building, right? So then our administrators had to find substitutes, right? So now we have to move people around to make sure. And, and students were, and staff were, everyone was okay, and it was moving people, they, you know, they had their general schedule, but because we were all in a lockout, no one could come in or out of the building. And so that allowed us to understand that we have to be prepared for that as well.
I think the piece for that too, that I know came up from my end as both a parent and a board member, is the communication piece of that. And I know I spoke with you regarding that as well, that I just think it's something, we've been very, very fortunate that we hadn't had a more serious incident, but I think unfortunately for us, in the day of technology, you know, the last thing that I want from, as a parent, including from my own child, is to get information from them before I get it from, from you, or the police, or whoever else is the higher up that should be giving the information. So I think that's something, I'd be curious to see how other school districts handle pertinent information like that going out. Are they utilizing their text messaging services? Because for me, as a parent, I think that's the, the fastest and easiest, I mean, everybody up here has their phone out, so God forbid there's an emergency, I know I'm going to get that. I'm not always checking the school district website and/or my email, so it was just something that I, I think it's something for the, for the task force to look at when they have these meetings.
So we, what we talked about as a cabinet, that was one of the items that we discussed, whether text message or email. So what we want to make sure is that text messages, and we, we need to speak with our team, is when do you use a text message, right? If a text message is used often, then sometimes people become reticent and they don't check it. So we want to put in a protocol that says text messages will only be used in cases of an emergency. And so when a parent of ours receives a text message, they'll know that this is an emergency. And that's, that's really important. The other thing that you shared, which is, unfortunately, when there is a lockout, as happened, when, when an administrator gets on the, the speaker and says, we're in a lockout, the students immediately have access to their cell phones. So it is, and, and I shared this with the board, it is difficult to beat that. Our communication to our families have to be concise and specific, so it's not as easy as my just telling our families, we're in a, we're in a lockout, because the minute I say that, there's an, there's, there's going to be a reaction. So I have to make sure that the language is clear, because I'm in communication with Mr. Chapoto, I'm in communication with the local police, and so it's really important for me to be able to get that information out quickly. And, and I agree with you, a text probably is the best way to go, but I have to make sure that we're, we're standardizing how we do things. So text messaging is important, but we have to make sure that everybody on our team understands that text messages are only for emergencies. And once we've been able to do that, then it will go out. But my text message will probably not go out as fast as kids.
I, I understand.
I wish I could beat them, but I can't. They're much faster than I am.
Right.
Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to approve the poll workers and election inspectors for the May 16th, 2023 annual meeting.
Motion.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve the schedule of 2023, 24 Board of Education meetings.
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to appoint the Board of Education's annual art purchase committee, which would be, which will include Mr. Jeff Reynolds, Mr. Dan Isrodi, and myself?
Motion.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve Orange Ulster BOCs 2023, 2024 Administrative Budget.
Motion.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.